I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:01. And we'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance to the flag if you'd join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have minutes from the March meeting and also the April meeting to review and approve. Has everybody had a chance to catch up on those? Yes? Okay. Any questions, changes, comments? No? Can I have a motion to approve the March and April meetings? Can we do both at once?
Sandy.
Sandy will approve, right. Yes, Michelle would ask that you say Sandy, please. Thank you. Sandy. Second?
Roseanne Wicks.
Oh, Roseanne.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous there, Michelle. What?
She can't do marches. She wasn't here.
Oh, April, sorry.
Okay. She didn't...
I'll second.
Pretending...
My name is Chris.
Yeah, sorry, thanks, Michelle. Okay, so I have one other item of old business still on here, is the representative to the ARB. Sandy was volunteering, but they meet on the day that she travels for work, so she can't do it. Was there anybody else that was interested, or am I it?
I might do it, but I don't have any new knowledge of stuff.
Well, it helps if you're gonna review the architecture. Sorry?
I didn't have that. I'm a volunteer, I guess, but...
So I'll take it until somebody else can do it. How about that? That'll work.
Well, if you can't go tonight, let me know.
Perfect, thank you. You'll be my backup. That's great, Kevin, thank you.
Because I'm kinda retired, so...
Okay. Some of us wish we were. So then next on old business, we have Brown's Foundry Lots with, I think, some renderings tonight. Okay.
Can we start by going through that?
Yep. Do you want me to read it, or do you wanna read it?
Well, that was... We wanted to see what your... Did you wanna go through it line by line, or did you have questions to review at this point?
I didn't have any questions. What about you, Jamie?
Nope, not particularly.
Anybody else have questions on that? Did you have?
Not questions per se, but I know that we've had the idea that, you know, this may need to go to the architectural review board first, so I don't know from a comment standpoint if we wanna talk about architecture or just...
We're talking about the...
Oh, the... Yeah. I'm getting ahead of myself.
That's okay. And yes, it will, but go ahead.
That's all I had.
That's it?
Yes.
So I don't think there's any questions about it.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward. You have anything you want to say about it, Steve?
Well, we had a question, I guess.
Okay.
Looking at the way this is set up, so we're looking at the entire parcel as the whole action.
Okay.
And that's 16.68 acres from 31 to 270.
Yes.
And as you know, looking at our rendering and based on our previous concept design, we have these areas of commercial development...
Correct.
On the edges. Those pieces of land are included in the total 16.68, but they're not designed yet.
Not in this site plan.
So they have not been included in, like, the impervious calculation, for instance.
Yeah.
That table in the EAF...
Right.
Has a set 8.2 acres of open space and commercial development. Like, it's all in the other section of the EAF. So they will be designed in the future as another case.
Right, and it'll be a separate site plan approval for those areas.
Right. But we just don't wanna segment it from this EAF.
Jamie?
I know, I'm gonna have to take that... I'm gonna have to... I can take that under advisement.
Okay.
Because I think we want to approve a whole PDD.
Yeah.
And it's part of it.
Right.
So I think there needs to be some plan for some kind of reasonable commercial project in that space. And then you can always come back. In fact, I think we're having someone come back soon to try to do, you know, something different in a PDD. I think it's gonna be essential for the PDD.
Okay.
And I think our traffic study contemplates development allocated to those parcels, so probably leads to we should assume that.
Yeah, that makes sense then. Who does?
I mean, I would think that you put in some placeholders.
And we have done that in the traffic study.
So at least that we don't have to redo Seeker completely at the...
Yeah.
At the amended PDD.
Right, good point.
You gotta put something in there if it's gonna be part of it. And I mean, I would say, you know, take your best crack at it, obviously, but...
Well, we've thrown some things around, but it's, you know...
Right.
But at least the environmental impacts will be fully assessed or planned.
Right. They probably won't really change that much either. Okay. All right.
One other question, Jamie. We would have one parcel on the Genesee Street side that we don't have under control. We feel we will. Is it okay to make that assumption in our Seeker?
You could do it with some change.
Well, the problem is you're gonna be doing the zone change as part of... Like, the whole PDD is the zone change. So I think it's gonna be a modification, or it's gonna be a separate, something that fits under the commercial zone and is compatible. I think if you really can't get it in a timely way...
It's not that we think we can't get it, it's... It's just something that needs to... The plan needs to progress a little further before they feel comfortable, I guess.
Well, that'll bring up the next issue then, you know, that we're talking about getting the plan progressed, I guess, after we review this. The other thing, there should be an application for the PDD, for a zone change, as part of this. Okay, so it comes here for the site plan approval per the PDD requirements. So there should just be a separate application, and then for Seeker, we'll put it... Well, the plan, if the planning board agrees, would be that. Planning Board will be lead agency for the whole thing.
Okay. That was one of our questions as well.
Yeah.
Determine that. Those were our questions. Yeah.
Want to go over the fun stuff?
Absolutely. So I am pinching for the architect, and like Mr. Hamilton, I am not an architect, but... So last meeting when we were in, I guess there's several meetings we've been in before, we were trying to get direction on some plan.
Yeah.
Concept, massing, building locations, heights, all that kinda stuff. This is similarly, we'd like to get some direction on architecture. So what you see in this package is there are five different architectural concepts that we put together. There are four, 1, 2, 3, and 4, there's a 2A and B that are just modifications of option 2. And they largely change materials. You know, you'll see some board and baton siding, you'll see some brackets at the gables, you'll see hip roof, and some real changes in the roofline in the dormers that exist. They all have porches. They all have fairly similar penetrations to them. There's some difference in stone, or heights, or extent, and so we're trying to walk through these and get some idea and guidance from the board as to what their thoughts are on what the direction should be for us, and whether it's 1, or 2, or components of several. Wanted to have that offered to you to give us direction on what the board would like to see for the village.
Okay. Does anybody?
I can start. Okay. A lot of them... Sandy, Ray. Of all of them, I...
Oh, she's gone.
Michelle. I do like the earthy tone, I think that would blend. I'm not sure, speaking from a rather, you know... Well, I like color. I feel like that would stand out quite a bit. I do like... I like that you pointed out some seem taller, and that was just from the roofline to how that was. I like the shorter a little bit, because we're all a little bit concerned with so many things too. Be shorter than the taller building, I think would be important. So immediately when I looked at this, you know, 2, I liked 2, you know, like 2A. It goes into the other 3 and 4. But there's just something about, for me, and it's just my personal opinion, I like the earthy blend being, you know, then with some green and landscaping, you know, it might set the stage a little bit with more of the woody effect around the surrounding area, so, yeah. But I do like the shorter look with the shorter...
Do you not like the hip roofs?
Yeah. I think it's a great look. I just think that all of a sudden getting taller again, and we were trying to keep the buildings a little bit shorter. That was my initial thought of that.
Along those lines, I don't care for the hip roof either. It's a little odd from some angles. And, you know, I understand the device, but it's a little bit odd. Option 1, I have some thoughts on the color. I like the color, maybe not red and blue, but the color does lend itself a little bit more to the village feel, because everybody's house is a different color. Except where they're all white. For the most part. I don't know that I'd go for the red and blue, you know, but they're a little...
Mix of the color.
Yeah, a little garish, a little bright, you know, something.
More earthy tones.
Yeah, or, you know, greens, something like that. Option 2 and 2A basically is the same as 1, but with different color palette and stone. I don't care for 2A. It's too monochromatic, I think. It doesn't really highlight the ins and outs, pulls of the building and the bays. 3, I don't care for at all. And I actually do like 4...
And you just heard she's on the ARB, so...
I want 4. I gotta lay it down. But option 4, I think, is my favorite in design, because I have never cared for the double gable, like in 1. You know, the kinda little bitty skinny double gable thing. But option 4, with the flat roof on the bay and the panelized, I think, really gives it... It makes it appear like there's a lot more in and out play on it, just visually to me. Those are my comments.
Do you like stone or brick?
What's shown on this? Is it like limestone? Is that what it is?
Elastor stone, yeah.
I don't mind the stone. I mean, it's got a richer look to it. I like the different types of siding. I like the panel on the bays.
Yeah, number 4 has the board red and siding, it's small.
Yeah.
I don't like that one with the stones.
What'd you say?
See, I really like the stone in the columns, the porch columns in the corner. They go up two stories.
Oh. Well, I think it only's on... It's only on that 1. It should... Might be a... Might be a rendering error, because it shouldn't have stopped down at the water table line?
I think from the structural engineering...
It's brought up on purpose. Okay, minor detail.
Now, this is Andrew. When it comes to the option 3s, I actually like that entrance style a touch better than some of the others, where it's just the small, you know. I like how it draws out, you know, a bit more than some of the others, where it's just, I mean, minimalistic when it comes to the overhang.
Anyone agree with that, Andrew?
Yeah, that was my main thing too, because I'm just thinking about, you know, in an apartment, you might have groceries, and maybe you're carrying a baby, and, you know, get your keys out, and it's raining, but it's kinda nice to have that.
It's much more functional, I think.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Roseanne Wicks, I agree with that too. I think it just gives it a little bit more of an element to the overall building. And I think if we took the stone and brought the stone up like they had in 1, instead of leaving it, I think, in the option 4... Oh, they only had it on the first floor. I actually liked it.
Well, it's an inner place.
I liked the stone up to the second.
Okay.
I actually...
Just on the inside.
Yeah, and option 1.
On the inside, the first stone.
Oh, I see, they're staggering a little bit.
Yeah. They're trying to develop some visual interest.
On the end part, they've got it up higher and lower.
Yeah.
I see that. I didn't see that before. It's just the color change, I think. The stone will be a little...
That's actually one of the first things I'd... I mean, I don't mind the colors too much, you know, but again, that was the whole... It feels like you're going down through the village, and it's as much as the earthy. The rest of the site plan is designed to kind of keep it from bleeding out into the village, which, so I don't mind some... Not being washed out inside of there, especially because the layout... I mean, I think, again, my hat's off to like the way the layout is now in it. You know, so some level of pop is not up. Especially because the way they're angled, you know, from Kent, you're not seeing that. You see that now when you enter. You'll see that full frontage as you enter either side, so...
Okay. Kevin, did you have anything?
No, I agree, no. The blue's out for me.
The blue's out for you? Okay, the blue is out for us.
But I like green.
You like green?
My house is all green.
All right.
I'm not gonna own them.
I like the green, I'm too.
Okay. Well, this'll ultimately go to the ARB, as you all know. Did you have more, or you just want our insights on that for tonight?
Some direction, and I think...
Did you get enough direction?
I think we can get it down to 2 options now.
Okay.
Take them and look down.
Okay.
All the comments, we appreciate it.
Okay. So Jamie and I had a discussion about how to move forward, and we'd like to have a joint meeting with the Village Board and probably the ARB also, and just try and get everything on the right railroad track, so that we're moving forward in a direction that makes sense time-wise, economically, all of those things. Our mayor is here also tonight. And I think we'd like to declare Planning Board Lead Agency for this. The Village Board would be lead agency for the zone change?
No, it would be Lead Agency Type 1 Coordinated Review, so we would do basically everything.
Oh, okay. All right.
And I did discuss that with the Village Board.
The Village Board Attorney?
Yep. Also, my law partner.
And, you know, we have to move forward to work on the PDD, so there is a lot of work to do yet, so... And I think you would agree, it's time to meet with the Village Board and ARB and try and dial in here what we're really looking at in order to move forward, because you're investing a substantial amount of money moving forward in things. And we have a lot of work to do with the PDD and so forth, so if you're agreeable that we think that makes sense.
Yes, sounds great.
Jamie, do I have to make a motion to... Yeah.
Well, we want a motion to declare Lead Agency, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to declare the Planning Board Lead Agency for the...
Type 1 action.
Type 1 action, thank you.
Andy Ray?
Sandy?
Coordinated review.
Coordinated review. Sorry, Michelle.
It's Chris, I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you, Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We appreciate all this hard work.
Thank you.
Do we wanna try to talk about any dates?
Um...
Could we mention?
We could.
Well, at least have an idea of what...
Yeah, so what, maybe a Tuesday or a Wednesday evening? Does that work for... What did you say? Tuesdays don't work for...
The only thing, just the first Tuesday, every month they have a standing board meeting at another board, so...
Are Tuesdays or Wednesday evenings better for anybody?
The 12th does not work for me.
The 12th does not work for you?
So what we're thinking is that it's gonna be a sit-around, you know, we'll be down here, work session style, and it will be a public meeting. So was that okay, like, Tuesday or Wednesdays? And we'll send around, see what the Village Board members say about that, Bruce?
Excuse me?
We'll see what the Village Board members say about a Tuesday or Wednesday evening?
Yep. Query them.
Query them? I mean, it can be earlier, if people want it earlier than 7? Not per Terry. Okay, 7's our first time.
Do we wanna try and narrow it to a couple of dates? So the 12th doesn't work for you, Greg?
No, I'm checking the 11th, I mean, I also...
The 11th does not work for me.
The 19th, then, maybe?
The 19th, or the 18th. I can do the 19th... Or possibly the 18th, anybody else?
I'm good on the date.
So...
Preferably 18th for me, between the 2.
Okay.
18th is available for me.
Okay, so can we get someone from the village to send out a poll to everybody with those dates to the Village Board and the ARB for the 18th or the 19th at 7? Preferably the 18th.
With the Village Board, ARB, and the Village Board?
Yes. Correct. At 7. Does that work for you?
Bruce, does that... Either of the... Do those dates work for you? Okay.
I have another board meeting, 5, 30, and 18, for... That's what we have, a little quick.
What board is 18?
18th or 19th.
Sorry, if I don't block it out now, it'll be gone.
I know, I'm just saying.
The 19th is a federal holiday.
It is?
Juneteenth.
Oh, it's Juneteenth.
That doesn't mean we can't meet. We can still meet on a federal holiday.
And the 18th doesn't work for me.
18th doesn't work for you? So, all right. Can you do the 19th?
Yeah, I can probably switch some things around. I got...
Okay, so for now, we're at the 19th. And now, I'll do it quickly here. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Now we have some new business, which is La Madre Landing, looking for a site plan extension. Since everybody's fairly new, I can try and bring you up to speed on this a little bit. They already have a site plan approval for their project, but they're awaiting funding from HCR and probably HHAP too. And the funding rounds are six months apart, so if your project doesn't get selected, then they just put you back in for the next round of funding. So they've... This might be their third round of funding for this, so they're asking for just an extension on the site plan approval that they already have. There aren't any changes to the project at all, it's just the same site plan, and they're asking for an extension. So based on our code, and I conferred with Jamie, we can do another extension, but not a six-months extension, because their two-year mark, when they would have to start the process over, is September 27, 2024. And I do not believe that... Usually the funding rounds come out in November. So they most likely will not have their approval, but at that point, the way the code reads, they will have to resubmit for a new site plan approval, which is, you know, they aren't changing anything, it's just the process that they have to go through. So does everybody understand all that? Yes? Okay. So I think I'd like to make a motion to extend their site plan approval until the two-year mark at September 27, 2024. And at that point, they would need to come in for a new site plan approval. Anybody second that?
Kevin? Kevin, second.
Okay? Yes? Okay, all right. And all in favor?
Aye.
No dissent. Motion carried, thank you, Michelle. And I think that concludes our business for the season. I'd like to adjourn and have a motion with...
I'm sorry, I'm not on the agenda, could I just say a couple things?
With regard to your project?
Well, it's 19 Phillips Street, yeah, the project at 19 Phillips Street.
Oh, okay.
That's up to you, I mean, it's not on the agenda, or is it pending at this point?
No, we don't have them on our agenda, and their approvals are not pending, so I'm not certain what the conversation is.
Okay, well, what I would just like to say is, for 40 years, I've been paying the taxes on that property. My name is Joe Donigan, I own a piece. And I've... The last three or four years, there's been a bunch of interest in the site. And that was recently denied, so these guys at Benchmark are doing their site plan, and they're looking to do a PDD. And they're looking to carve off a little piece of paradise for me.
Right. I believe they mentioned that when they were here first.
So if you're doing the planning, wouldn't that be the point to put me in the plan?
I'm really not sure what the question is. I'm not sure what your question is.
I would think that they would be purchasing their property, and at that point excluding your piece of land that you're interested in, so that...
They're buying the whole site from me. And they're gonna parcel off a little piece, but wouldn't that... If I'm selling the whole piece to them, wouldn't that whole piece be part of the PDD?
So what you should do is...
No, no.
Not necessarily.
The developer, if I could interject, when I met with him, spoke about your duplex.
Yeah.
And because that doesn't fit into the scheme of anything, that would be cut off by self, that's... That would be in the PDD, that would be you and R1 having a house built.
Okay, and then if I wanted to do a two-family, I would do a...
It's allowed in the R1.
Yeah, probably what you should do is...
Two-family is allowed in R1?
Yes. Yes. And I'll go away and stop the interruption.
That's okay, that's okay. What you should do is check with your attorney, if there's a purchase offer, and let them know that, what you're trying to do, and they should be able to do that. It may need to be subdivided out.
Well, what was confusing for me in the meeting that Benchmark was here, they mentioned that the carve-out for me for a two-family, and I think one of the attorneys said that wouldn't be doable in an R1 zone, because it's only... R1 is only one family. So that's what confused me.
So why don't... I mean, we can adjourn. It wouldn't really be part of the PDD, should be...
But the whole parcel is gonna be zoned PDD that they're buying from me, right?
It's really... It's a little more complicated... It's a little more complicated than that, and I can talk to you about that.
Why don't we close the meeting?
Okay, I didn't mean to...
No, no, absolutely not.
I didn't know what you were...
Another question. If you don't... Half the time, we're trying to figure out the process is complicated, you know? So, let me just... I think I got to opposed, and no one was, so I think we close the meeting at 7:32. And then we can talk to you. Jamie can help you, too. But my thought would be, it would never be in the PDD. They might buy it, but then they have to go through the process to develop the PDD without your piece of property.
But they want the PDD approval before they give me the money for my property.
Right.
Without a PDD approval, they've got 15 acres of dirt, you know?
Right. But still, that... Shouldn't that be excluded from the PDD, that piece of property?
Well...
I can't remember what the PDD... I don't remember what the PDD looked like.
No, that's okay.
Exactly.
I'll second it.
Oh, yeah.
You already did that.
We already did that. We're good, but thank you. I just got to the opposed, and then...